March regular school board meeting to order. Mr. Williamson will be joining us in just a minute. Welcome, thank you for coming this evening and spending some time in the sunshine with us since we've got daylight savings up now. We're gonna do our pledge and then we'll have our end of vacation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all your kindness and goodness to us, especially as we enter into the time of East, you're giving your son as a sacrifice for us and we just thank you. We just pray again as we come for world peace in all wars and the things that are going on, those also facing natural disaster, those who are less fortunate than us. And God also desireth, like to pray for our staff, many of them have family illness and been illness, have been ill this past two months, that you would just strengthen them and that you would touch also their family members. Now, guys, as we come tonight, we pray to bless this meeting, bless this board as we do all we can for this wonderful community that we live in. Bless our government and our parents and our young people and teachers who strive every day to put us in a great position as a community. Now, God bless this meeting for your purpose, that everything done might be done to glorify you in Jesus' name.
All right, any registered speakers?
None.
All right, we'll move on to community focus. This evening, we have someone from the United Way to talk to us about their Growth and Opportunities Center, and it's being presented by Kenesha Coles.
All right, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Grace, I just want to say thank you for inviting me to come out tonight and speak on behalf of the Growth and Opportunities Center with the United Way. Again, my name is Kenesha Coles. I am the Family Resource Center Coordinator. Before we get in about the Growth and Opportunities Center, I just wanted to take a quick moment just to highlight what exactly a family resource center is. So, family resource centers are located all across the United States. Here recently, they've been considered America's best kept secret because of the benefits they're doing in the community. They can be community or school based and pretty much it's a welcoming hub, just offering support and services and opportunities to strengthen families. So, a little bit about our family resource centers. So, we are one of seven family resource centers that are opening in Virginia, partnering with Families Forward of Virginia. Utilizing the National Family Support Network model, our overall goal is to reduce the likelihood of child abuse and neglect, advance racial equity, we want to support underserved communities with preventative programs, and then speak to the overall complex issues that results in families being in the welfare system. So, our Growth and Opportunities Center is located at 311 Brown Street. First and foremost, our center is a community hub. Our community is enriched with a lot of community partners already and resources. So, we want to make sure our community has a place to go to and be able to access all of the resources we have. We want to make sure that we are bridging the gap, impacting families. We are doing a lot of research, getting out in the community, seeing what is our community saying is a problem and the issues that they're having. And then we want to create or bridge those gaps to get them there. We want to identify those services and then, again, making sure that everything we provide at the services, the community said we needed. We're not just creating programs, we're getting out there and hearing directly from our community. We want to pay attention to our non-traditional partners. Of course, it's great to partner with Grace Network, Department of Social Services, PMR Community Service. But we want to make sure we're getting out there and talking to convenience store owners, to principals of the school, and really finding out what are those things we're missing. And one of my favorite things is our Lex leaders. We're actually hiring individuals with lived experience navigating the child welfare system, and they'll play a vital role in our programs and implementation and making sure that we're not leaving anything out, but then also there being a voice and being right out with our outreach in the community. So, back in January, we had our first listening session over at Albert Harris, and we plan to do more of those listening sessions. But the community came together, they identified some of the challenges that families are facing, and then from those challenges, we created solutions based off these three categories. So, education, employment, and financial stability. United Way has a lot of those programs already. So, we want to connect people with our Bridges of Poverty program, our Abiction Reduction program, our Bank On, just to make sure we're educating and then building them up financially. But then employment, we want to connect people with resume building and what other thing? Resume building and interview skills. So, that way, when they do get the opportunity to have a job, they're already equipped to make sure that they can match those skills. Family activities and support, we'll have plenty of support programs. But our Growth and Opportunities Center will have a drop-in service where families with children from zero to five can come in and just have a space to play with their children. Our MAC Partners for Children will come in and do activities, so again, improving those social skills. And then, of course, basic needs, health and developmental services, increasing developmental screenings, our childcare screenings, and then having more concrete resources. Right now, we are partnering with Henry County Food Pantry so that we will have some food boxes on staff, and then again, we'll be working to bring in more concrete resources here at the center. So, overall, the center is open. We are open Monday through Thursday, nine to five. Fridays and Saturdays is by appointment only. I did bring and leave some info cards that just have some of our information on it. The QR code is there where you can scan and complete the survey. Because again, everything that comes out of this center is community focused. So, it has to be a need in the community and our resource has to prove that as well. But that's what I have. Thank you for our time. Again, we hope to see you at the Growth and Opportunities Center where we put families first.
All right, moving to number four, our consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes from the February nineteenth meeting and the financial report from February twenty ninth. May I have a motion for that?
Aye, so move.
Any questions? May I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under our action agenda, we need to hear about the annual special education plan, which will be presented by Dr. Tarpley. And then after that, we will ask questions and vote on that.
Did you want to get a copy?
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Okay. So, every year, our school division is required by state and federal law to submit an annual plan through the Virginia Department of Education for the purpose of providing special education services to students with disabilities. School divisions must, we're required, so we must submit the plan via an online application. It's an online process. So, we're requesting today permission to submit the Title VI Federal Funds Application through the Special Education Annual Plan. The allocations are calculated based on the number of students we have receiving special education services. So, every December one, we have to count for every student in our division who's receiving special education services or related services. This year, we're requesting funds for the salaries and benefits of special education teachers as well as paraprofessionals. The actual appropriations are usually awarded around October of every year. So, there are two parts to this grant. There's the six eleven grant funds, and this, these funds are used for children in grades K through twelve. So, right now, we have about two hundred and forty students in grades K through twelve. So, we'll use the funds for three special education teachers and fifteen special education paraprofessionals, and these are just estimates. We also have to set aside money for children who are not enrolled in Martinville City Schools. So, we have some students, for example, who, who is homeschooled, and we have to provide services like speech-language services to those students. The other grant is our six nineteen, and that money is used to fund children, early childhood special education children, ages three to five. And we have about thirty-one students, and they may not be necessarily enrolled at Clearview, they may be at Head Start or Early Intervention. So, we'll use a portion of our allocations to fund one special education teacher. We also set aside money for students who are not, who are not enrolled with Martinville City Public Schools. So, for six eleven grant funds, we are requesting five hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. And then for our six nineteen funds, we are requesting eight thousand sixty-four dollars. And I also put just some previous allocations so you can see about what we've received each year. And we won't know again until about October what our allocations are. So, I'm asking permission to submit the application via this online process.
Are there any questions from the board? May we do it under one vote, or do we need to do it separately?
We have a motion.
Just for one vote?
Motion.
May I have a motion to approve the plan for the grant, for six eleven grant and the six nineteen grant for special education?
Aye, so move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Up next, we have our school calendar for school year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. We've seen it in its draft stage, and this is the final draft or proposal for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Any highlights you'd like to say before we go?
We did, the board requested that we include veteran statement. We did. Also, I just want to say that I think SAC committee, which is our superintendent supervisory committee, probably gave more input into this calendar than in. Of course, we also were trying to be parallel with governing school. And you know, because you were at the other meeting, that only basically us in Henry County did that. Some of the other school divisions kind of skewed off in terms of kids, and that's important for the families of vacation. And because we had no control over East of L, we also talked to principals and talked to our academic people about testing for next year. So, that, that's also important. So, I think it's an excellent calendar. It does almost coincide with Henry County, which we try to do because we have parents who work here that live there and vice versa. But I think it's as close as we can get with our duplicating. So, I think it's an excellent calendar, and we will be glad to entertain any questions that you might have. But I want to thank the staff, especially the teachers. They have a large input, just presented before that staffs also very much community deal.
Do we have any questions from the board? My only question is probably Angela, when, how will we do testing? Because normally, we start at the end of April, and that's going to be spring break. So, will you start before spring break, or are you going to hit it after?
We're going to hit it after, and we actually worked out a whole schedule where we get it all in and not have to start exactly right after spring break.
Okay.
And still have time for end-of-year activities. So, developed a schedule for that and then sent out drafts about to the principals to repeat that.
Okay.
So, they already have continued the testing one to for next year. So, we feel pretty confident. Again, where East of L, we've just been having a control.
How will, how will we handle prom? Is that going to be before break?
No, we, we've looked at that too.
Too, okay.
We've looked at that too.
All right. All right, may I have a motion to approve the calendar for school year twenty-four, twenty-five?
Aye, so move.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the six-year comprehensive plan. We were presented that the first time, I believe, via email in December. And then we, so we've had time to look over it because it was a little lengthy. A little lengthy presentation, how about that? So, we did not reprint those tonight. I assume you all are going to walk us through that.
Yeah, and I have them if you need. I have copies of them if you need.
Okay. Anybody like to?
Anybody have additional copies? We have those if the press needs. One would have another from press too if you need. I thought since we gave them out so early that a lot of people lose them. Again, we gave these ideas some, but I want to thank again, and I want everybody to understand the things that we do is because we break the gap. We have one, thank our staff, principals, each school for like input. Each school is given an opportunity to respond to the cabinet. The cabinet and I started with the last spring, I can't remember, it might have been last spring for this, and did it a couple of times this summer. So, it's about a year and making. And, and the critical thing to this is that every six years, we have to have a comprehensive plan. And I'll tell you, the one that we had, this is my second one, the one we had, the second year that I came on board, we were able to accomplish half of those things probably in three years, which is great. And so, we're looking forward to doing this, and it's a, it's a growing document, and that's what I'm trying to say. We, none of this staff will probably finish most of these things in three years, four years before we, this twenty-third. So, I want to thank the staff again for help. Again, you can see, again, this is called the Power Twenty Thirty. I'll just hit some, some points, but the cabinet is, is ready because each of them covers a specific area. We also have principals and teachers ready if we need to. If you have any specific questions, to let us know, don't let me go by, because I'll, again, you've had a couple of months, I know. But again, I just want to go through some things. Again, our goals are the same. If you look at our goals, they're the same. Again, those two goals, which have been very successful for the past eight years. Increasing family engagement, decreasing school, high school suspensions, which has been very challenging after COVID. Very challenging because of young people, you know, being out of school for two years. It's been a challenge state and nationwide. And then academic excellence, and I'm very proud of that because our, our schools have done very well. We wanted a few schools that are not under any type of federal monitoring right now for grades. And neighboring schools have seven schools, neighboring schools have two schools. Martinville City Schools have no school this time, and they're all accredited in eight years. And so, again, I, I'm glad that we don't have to, to measure our own standards. These things come from the state. And again, we're, we're very proud of that. Hasn't been a lot written about that in paper, but we're very proud of it. And we'll continue to break on our kids and teachers. Again, so we've, we've seen the academic excellence, developing critical thinking, creating multiple year plans, especially with technology. We were one-on-one. I remember when we did the first plan, we were not one-on-one, and I think COVID and S of money kind of assisted all of us in getting confused in the, the hands of our students. Also, partnering with the community businesses and agencies, and that, that part has really taken off for us. I don't know anyone who started student businesses like we have. So much, and I won't, I've said it in the meeting today, but so much that we have divisions now calling, trying to recruit our people because we, it's true, we have two businesses, the parental and the sticker buy, which are up and running and making profits. It's just amazing. Our students love it. Some of them are planning to do businesses when they get out, and we're, we're planning to have a location where they can branch out and do more things. In fact, students hitting me, providing to buy some things because they are out there, they're really pushing it. They really, they're taking a lot of pride in that, especially by Dallas Capitol thing. I, you know, I had to go again, but these programs are very important now. We making sure that our courses are rigorous. We still have AP courses. We're, we're trying to develop graduates who are life-ready, who can deal with technology because it is a technological world. We're still doing things through analysis, CT, but classroom observations. And we talked about that a little bit today in our principals meeting. Staff is really getting out, getting to buildings, getting to classrooms because we want to be a part of what's going in the classroom. Last week, I went door-to-door to just look at student accountability, to see if they were tracking their grades, how many of them could log on Power School and, and tell me what the average was. And we, we literally went from classroom to classroom with principals because I wanted to question the kids to make sure that they're taking a good part of our education. Some things that we plan to do in technology, they're doing a heck of a job in terms of implementing systems, assessments through digital portfolios that the students are making. You know, to make sure that each student leaves with some type of computer skills, ready for the work world, and also have some type of certificate in some area that they could work in. And that, that's, we want to make sure all of them have an industry credential in, in something when they leave school so that they can enter to the work world if, if necessary. Again, to develop with students college and career-ready skills, to make sure that we continue our three- and four-year program. And I think Angela mentioned that today that we want to increase that, we want to be full. But we got great news that that's going to be fully funded next year. We're excited about that. We know, and, and I think we sent you two that mentioned, if we pack those lower levels out in preschool that the kids come up reading and gives them a big heads up, and of course, that impacts academics and test scores. So, we, we want to continue to grow those, those classes at that level. We also still utilize the BTSS. We're still doing instructional rounds. The administrators do them, people from the central office do them, special needs, those we do them. I like to go with the principals too, and so we're in every classroom. And I think one unique thing about our system is most of our kids will know our people from central office because they see them with their principals in classrooms. And that's highly unusual. Usually, central office folks are in central office. But I'm glad our staff is getting out, and I think it makes a, it, it makes a difference. Looking at data protocols to improve decision-making when it comes to teaching and learning. A system of monitoring, providing feedback, classrooms, and special education, recruiting and retaining highly effective staff. I'm glad to report that at this point, it looks like we're going to retain well over nine percent of our staff for next year. And we're really excited about that. If you notice, that percentage has, has been growing in the last two years. And I want to thank the board for your support for that because I think that's important to resist turnover and to have, especially because we invest so much in professional development in our students. Also, providing development for general education and teachers on WEDA. We do have an influx, and Dr. Vaughn mentioned that today, we have an influx of, of students who are multilingual and don't all speak English. And they are protected group, just like special needs. And we have to make sure that they get educated and that they're tested. That, that's so important. And so, we're working with our English learners. Goal two, safe and supportive schools. Under the first objective, we talked about providing a safe and orderly learning environment. And you know, that's, that's very important for us to address discipline, to try to reduce suspensions, but at the same time, to make sure we have a safe and orderly environment. Students do not learn well when there is not a safe and orderly environment. And so, our administrators are spending a lot of time conferencing parents, talking to teachers. Again, we're having meetings, we're trying to invite parents in when necessary to try to deter problems that, that we might encounter. And so, this is, this is very important. We're also partnering with community agencies for mental health. Was with Meeting and Harvest, and they're planning to bring, in fact, more mental health staff into this area. We understand, we recognize that we're going to shower from the point that there are many people in our area, as in other areas, that need mental support as well as students and as well as teachers and staff members. And I'm glad for the, the program that we just met with Harvest where they're getting ready to provide more. Some of it through telehealth and some of it through in-person. Again, to make sure that everything is done safely, to have resource officers. We do have them in all schools but one, and we're working on getting one for our final school, Clearfield. To make sure our facilities are safe, our director of safety has had a, a big part in that. In fact, we're on the cutting edge of most stuff that school divisions do not yet have in Virginia, and TJ's been sought for that. Also, we'll use resources to monitor student populations. I read a great article, looking at two point one seven, I read a great article about Weldon Cooper missing. It was a great article in the paper on yesterday online. How Weldon Cooper cannot accurately predict this area because even though we're having fewer births, we're still having more people moving in to Martinville and Henry County. And we have stumped them for, Travis, I don't know how many years, that they, they keep missing us, and we're glad of that because, you know, we have a stable population, still school enrollment, and I'm looking for Martinville to be a growing area. We're also, we were the first in this area to start implementing metal detectors at games. And maybe coming back to you for some money because we'd like to buy, if we can't get it from grants, some standalone metal detectors for games. Of course, we went with banning book bags, things of that nature, a lot of this around the school divisions. You have to have a clear one, or you can't bring one in at all. And I, I think you're going to see that being paranormal now. And so, we, we started that with warning students, and we know that we're going to have to increase that. Again, under safe and supportive schools, two-two point one. Again, wellness plans, had an interesting call from the State Department talking about wellness and nutrition. And, you know, she'll do this all she can to keep us home involved, which is a big job. Y'all keep her in your prayers, you know, to keep us well and to, you know, our food program is, is really booming. In fact, you know, our students really take advantage of, of food we give in school, and it's very important for us. We worried when we go to spring break, and we still have food banks that we have sent home to some students. We worry if our students are eating for that weekend. I know it may not seem common to us, but there's literally some schools who don't get a balanced three meals once they're out of school. And it's, it's very important that we make sure we continue to meet the needs of, of students. Having our recruitment retain a highly qualified nurse at each school. And we just hired our last nurse at Albert Harris, so we do have a nurse at each school, and I think that's very important. Coming up in the future, drop-off prevention coordinator is coming. And to work on our absenteeism, we have the same problems other people are having. You see that at two-two point four. We have the same problems, especially since COVID. A lot of students still have not returned to school. I know you may find that difficult to live, but nationwide, there are a lot of missing students who have yet to report to school after COVID. And of course, we're responsible for them because it's mandatory. School age is mandatory in Virginia and across the nation. There, from what I understand, several millions of students who are still missing from COVID. And so, we're, we're going to take some effort to try to recruit those. We're partnering with the police department, which I think is one of the best in, in the state of Virginia. Having them live in some areas as I have lived before where there have been some crimes and some gangs. Our police department works so well with us and. Our police department works so well with us and a great liaison with us and our students. Again, we're planning to, in every school, at end of year, I get with Felician, we go through the number of suspensions to see if we can reduce the number of suspensions by ten percent and absenteeism. So we have that check on us every year we go back and look out. We do have in two, three, three, two point three, three, we do have the ITRTs into the building, helping students with technology, helping teachers with technology. We also have a special education advisory committee. I have attended one of those meetings. Those are great meetings, and I invite the board. I think you have four, four each year to come. Now, it's a great meal, but it's also a great chance to, really fellowship. When you come, you'll see the parents are very, very serious about their child's education. Our special needs parents are very sincere about making sure that their children, not only get a great education, but have some type of path in terms of what are we going to do once we get out of school? That they can be meaningful citizens. And I appreciate the efforts that Dr. Chapman, partly and others put in there. Also, in terms of communication, again, Cali does an excellent job of our social media page, getting our information, networking down with the city. We're doing a lot more networking together. And scheduling things so that the community would be well aware of. And then the last page, my goal that I put it, I'll never forget this back in twenty fifteen, the building of Virginia, which is going to become a reality now. I remember when I did that, and Dr. Munkum was school chair then. And I remember when some board members were wondering if I should even put it in the earlier six year plan, but I had a vision that that would be possible here. And then we're working with city council to develop the one percent tax and other sources of revenue that we might use. And also local businesses, we've been in talks with left the group and some of the other businesses about getting some things together. And I just want the board to know that we're working on those things behind the scenes to get our suspected pages in, because it is a safety matter now. We're very fortunate, and I think Dr. Dixon and his staff, and also Ms. Law did a great job of having coverage for our games. We had no real incidents, but we know it's a safety thing. And we also know that our students deserve it. Questions? I know it's a quick fly through, but I just wanted to hit some highlights. Do you have any questions from any of the staff?
Only thing I would have is, do we have, where would the bus safety fall in under the?
Safe, safe environment, safe in all these schools.
Several incidents we've had this year have been on the bus. So I don't know if that was in the plan somewhere, and what category it'd be in.
Travis, you can help me with that, safety, bus safety. We have what, cameras on all our buses now? Right, TJ, you guys?
Multiple cameras from various angles throughout the buses. They also capture audio and things outside of the bus, which have been helpful, by the way, on several occasions. We have special lighting systems, which are much more alerting than just the basic brake lights and things that pop up. And I think that helps primarily with rear end issues. I don't think we've had a major rear end since we put those in, but we did have some before that. We had one in fog, and then somebody speeding included you one time, but aside from that, nothing major. Other than the one failure with the bus last year, but that plan wouldn't address something like that.
And I love the GPS factor because parents will call me like, I saw bus fourteen, I'm just using the number, don't care. I saw bus fourteen going downtown, and it was doing fifty miles an hour because they sound so loud. And Damian's able to go with the GPS, which is on all of our vehicles, and he can pull up and he can tell you exactly what time it was and what speed it was. And because sometimes the buses sound loud.
And they capture the behavior of the buses, you know, we can tell when, you know, using your turn signals, prockin', this, that, and the other.
Yeah.
This is worse. I think all student related, all the issues we've had this year, so that was talking about, but the cameras would, I think, cameras.
TJ, were you going to say something?
I'll just add one other.
Yeah.
They are equipped with panic alarms as well. So that activates the GPS, which sends a signal to law enforcement to their phones. And they can pull up Google Maps and tell exactly where that bus is at.
It also notifies some of us the same.
Outside cameras, as far as when the stop sign comes out.
We're currently working on that with the police department. We've met with a company, I forgot where they're out of. But it's currently, we've asked for them to put it on five buses to start off with. After Mr. Tarpley and I talked, but that is forthcoming.
Okay, good. I asked that question because I just saw one go. A vehicle just speed past the stop sign today, so. Yeah, and that's bad, and that's, that's very, very dangerous. Absolutely. We're real fortunate. I think transportation department does an excellent job. Roanoke is subbing out. I know they've had a hard time with buses. And we have hired, Travis, do you remember how many? I know it's at least three or yon. Do you know how many bus drivers we've hired this year? I know it's been several, I've cleared.
Five, and we got one screening now.
Okay, and so we're picking them up. So we do have bus drivers for all of our routes, and we picked up five this year so far. So if any of you want to get your bus driver licenses and drive buses, I'm serious. Hard time, let us know.
Especially for extra curricular.
Right, expression for spring sport and all this extracurricular games. I'm serious, you can drive it. So if you want, if you want a hard time job. We'll accept applications. Thank you. Any questions, thank you. And thank you. I know the document was going to, but we have to do this every six years. And I think we're going to eventually start stretching this out to ten years. Because it's important, and we talked to Rita, the city manager, about that. I think they're doing a twenty year plan. It's important to kind of have an idea where we're going, even if we're not there.
All right, if there are not any other questions, I need a motion to approve the comprehensive plan for twenty twenty four to twenty thirty as it was presented.
Aye, so.
All right, on the favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have some considerations of policies. I'm sure that you've read the excellence. There is an amendment here. Do I need to read this out loud, or does everybody need to have read it?
You can read it out loud so everybody knows. With amendment, it's an amendment to a current policy.
All right, so amendment to the board's current policy under J H C D to include the following verbiage. School nurses and local health department employees who are assigned to work at Martinsville City Public Schools and designated Martinsville City Public Schools staff members may possess and administer naloxone or other opioid antagonists used for overdose reversal to a person who's believed to be experiencing or about to experience a life threatening opioid overdose, provided that they have completed a training program in accordance with the Martinsville City Public Schools policy and policy inflammation, implementation procedures. Any questions about the addition?
And this would allow us to administer that drug, come back. Any student or staff member or any person overdosing. And most school divisions in Virginia are adopted that now, because unfortunately it's becoming common. It'll save a life. It'll save a life. Four times a nun.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, may I have a motion to approve the policies as they are presented to us?
Absolutely.
Second, second. On the favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is the brief superintendent's report. I have a little humor.
I feel like I'm hearing Cam Cooper all over again.
Thank you for the training, Miss Cooper.
Watch me, watch me. Anyway, all right. I want to talk about governor's school because you were there.
I'm going to talk about that.
Okay, so we got one on. We, along with Dr. Vaughn, Dr. Dowling, and Carrie Wright, we've been attending the V L A training in Salem High School. We have to go in Wednesday. And this will talk to us about some of the new standards that are coming out, especially in reading. We're concerned about reading. We talked about that one today in our staff meeting, and that we want to see our reading scores go up. It's just essential. When students read, they can do almost anything. And so we have had, how many trips is Angela going to make? Four trips? We've gone once. Isn't it three? It's one this week, two more.
We've gone once to go this week. We go in April, maybe in May twice.
It's twice, and so we're spending, you know, pretty much a whole day there. But it's important to bring this information back to make sure that we improve reading. I did meet with Harvest, and I told you about that. They are going to bring a new health center here, especially with mental health, and I think that is just essential. To have counselors talk to people about problems. Again, it's hard for learning to take place when people are having issues. And we all have issues, and we got to get away, get to the state one with that and get people help. And it could be one of us that needs help. We did have a great DLT meeting. It was down there. We looked at our data, where we are and where we need to go. And one of our former superintendents said we faced approval facts. What he just tells us, that that is what it is. And we know that how our students can improve. And so I want to assure you, we're working on it. I had excellent PBIS meeting, and I love those because we talk about discipline, we talk about problems, where they're happening, what time of day they're happening, and things we can do. And it's a lot of good sharing in those meetings, and I appreciate everybody who's involved. I'm excited. We did make it to a state game in basketball. It's been years. We were really excited. Had traveled over Bristol twice, but just real congratulations to our kids. I don't think we've been there since fifteen or, somebody told me today, when is it?
I know we won in sixteen.
So it's been a while, and we're on the road, and the kids were a long way from home, but very proud of what they accomplished this year. Only losing to Tonsil this year in district play. And so really excited. I hope those, by the way, a lot of those students, many of those students have excellent grades. They're also taking dual classes at PH. Really excited about that. Because they're looking to pay high going to college and looking forward to that. So we really enjoyed them and the parents. Did meet Travis and I with Spurrel and Mandi from downtown to talk about the budget. And we'll be bringing you update. You'll notice this weekend, junior assembly. Went home and presented budget. Hopefully governor's going to sign it. It does offer money. We talked about that in the meeting today, Travis did. Three percent raise this year, next year, in hopes of catching us up to the national average. It would be so great if Virginia teachers made the national average in salaries. You know, because everybody's recruiting. I think we're down at least a thousand teachers in Virginia. And this will help us with recruiting. SAC committee did an excellent job. They did a lot of work on this calendar that we had and its other concerns. Want to congratulate the Sean Hines and her staff at high school on The Little Mermaid. It was a great performance. Scared me to death when one of the kids fell on skates though, because of a pit. I'm just sorry, I'm used to falling because that's all I do when I skate. But I thought he might fall in the pit. And that was scary, but it was a great production. And I want to thank everybody for coming, because most of the staff did attend that weekend. The trade show was excellent. I want to thank everybody who went. Of course, I'm very biased. I think we should win every year, and I said it. I just did. The display was excellent. We have won two previous years consecutively, and I guess they think that lets the minus win for a while. But we always go for the best, though. We always go for a hundred percent. It was beautiful, and we have both of our businesses there, St. Japhy and the Colonel there. And it was just nice with recliner. It was just a nice display. I want to congratulate our staff. Tornado drill, we did have that. It's a little healthy, but we did have those, and of course those are important. With weather conditions getting bad, now we never know when we'll actually have one. Dancing for larks this weekend was excellent. Very proud of Coach, who danced with the high school, and Greg, who was entertainment all by himself. Who danced too. It was just a great time. Very grateful for the reading. Had a chance to read it, Patrick Henry and Albert Harris, and those of you also who are part in that. We had a great, great time with reading with the students. And the seniors who came from the high school who read. And from my understanding, Clivey especially, they were just taken aback with the athletes and students who came over to read with them. And so I haven't given her my spot this year. I was a little upset. But again, it went very well. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, matters from the board. Ms. Lang and Baker, do you have anything for us? Questions, concerns? Ms. Blackwell, I do that. Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams?
I do. I want to thank each and every one of you for the fine job you're doing. And for those of you that had me in your prayers over the past two months, I want to thank you also.
A couple of things. I was going to touch on GovSchool. We did meet last month. And it's a longer meeting for Governor's School, going over budget and different requests and things that we need to get in mind. Of course, their budget can't be set till the state does theirs as well. And they're also trying to get teachers' pay raises up to be with the average. And also, they did have a little extra money, and the discussion was made over buying the director newer car. The car they've had there, I think, is fifteen, sixteen years old. And there was quite the discussion over whether the county, which does the actual fiscal financial things for Governor's School, for all four school systems, whether they could give them something else, but we decided to go ahead and buy them a newer car because the director does drive from the Martinsville site to Danville site two or three times a week. All the materials are sent for both GovSchools to the Martinsville sites, so they have to haul things back and forth. And they do need room to do all that for the different materials. So that has been approved. And there's a lot of discussion with the calendar. Dr. Tally is correct. Martinsville, Union County, both tried to lean their calendars so it would match what Governor's School needed to be done. And so there was quite a bit of trying to figure that out because with the way spring breaks are falling and different school systems are choosing, it could be that one school system's out, so that batch of children would be out for one week in not at GovSchool, and then GovSchool would have a different spring break, and then there could even be a third. So it was quite, it was quite a lengthy discussion, but I think all has been resolved. I want to thank you all for the trade show. Everything, the booth looked really nice. It was nice to have the students there participating, telling you about what they did, trying to get you signed up to order t-shirts or anything else you might want or need. So that was very nice. The play was very well attended. It was nice and impressive to hear that they're able to give three seniors scholarships to help them with their college, and that's nice that they've raised that kind of money and have that ability. They also were very, Ms. Hines made sure that they were able to give back part of their gate, I think is the way she put it, towards the Mrs. Billups Memorial Scholarship. And since they couldn't get a team to participate, she donated part of her funds, and that's very generous. So thank you for that. I want to give props to all the athletes who've been participating, although they didn't win at the state level. We've had folks with indoor track that got to go, wrestlers that got to go. We had folks for swimming and diving that got to go. So we had a diver that placed fourth for the state, who had never dived before this year, never had that ability. So that's impressive. So props to them, and they're also, they're student athletes. They are. are very well versed with their academics and in good standing, so props to that. I want to thank Piedmont Arts for bringing the poetry session they had this past week at the high school, it's the Roscoe Fermus Poetry, I think Dr. Downing was able to go and see the final on Friday because Dr. Tally, now we're not able to be there, but I want to thank them for always bringing and showcasing and, and giving us actual special things at school.
They gave me a private showing and so I would like to invite the students to come next, uh, month and read.
That would be wonderful, now that, I, I like that.
They're good too.
If you'll get in touch with those students, we'd love to hear theirs.
They're great.
Um, so thank you and thank you also for, uh, uh, Coach who participated in Dancing with Arts, I understand that was a very successful Saturday night as well. Um, reminder of dates, tomorrow's the end of the third nine weeks and so folks are gonna be getting out three hours early. This Saturday is Philatania Billups Memorial Scholarship Adult Field Day, begins at noon. Um, if you're not able to attend and just want to make a donation, Ms. Billups and her family have always been huge band supporters and have done a lot, uh, there is a tro- not a trophy, a plaque, a word that they give out in her sister's memory and so they wanted to do something for her as well, even after she had students who were no longer in the band, she's still on to it for every football game, every trip, and we so want to honor her. Our next Governor's School meeting is March nineteenth. After Prom has got an exciting fundraiser on March twenty-third. Time for that, anybody know?
Uh, three.
Three o'clock?
Yes.
And it's gonna start out as the faculty versus student basketball game, then move along to purple Qs versus gold Qs basketball game. And if you can't come to that, please help donate and support our After Prom. I can tell you, having shared that for many years, it, it is needed, funds are needed so we can keep our students safe that evening and if you'd like to vote, make a donation, please feel free to send that to the high school, uh, under the care of After Prom and Ms. Holland and make sure that the right folks get that. We will be out for a Good Friday holiday on March twenty-ninth, our spring break is April one through five, we are extending that by day and calling it a weather day. Um, we have a lot of bank time for snow days that we never saw a flake this year, unfortunately, and so we thought that it would be nice for folks to have a little extended spring break. We still will have our school board meeting that evening and I hope the staff can kill us for having to come that evening, but I thought it might make it easier since you don't have to come to work during the day, maybe wouldn't hate us enough to come that evening, let's see. And then on the ninth, everyone will return. They're all grumbling, I wish.
Say, live in my world.
Well, we couldn't, there was no way, there wasn't enough time to back it up, so. Any unregistered citizen comments?
Was open for one, I know?
Yes, sir, we just need to read our, our little spiel to you.
Oh, okay.
And then you make it up and speak if you'd like.
Oh, okay, you read first and?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Then we have to speak.
The section, this section of the board meeting provides citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia the opportunity to discuss matters which are not listed on the printed agenda and that the school board meetings are broadcast on Martinsville Government TV, which is no longer the case, I think it's on Facebook. The school board is responsible for the content of the programming, thus any person wishing to bring a matter to our attention under this section of the agenda should do the following, come to the podium and state their name and address, state the matter that they wish to discuss and what action they would like for us to take, limit their remarks to five minutes, refrain from making any personal references or accusations of a factual or false or malicious nature. Only citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia, persons having children enrolled in the city school system or persons employed or enrolled in the school system may address the board. So you may come on.
I am, uh, Patrick H, H Wright of Martinsville, you know, Virginia, and I would like to, I would, would like to note is, is, is this, you do like ask, like, what's called when you have a report? Oh, yeah, report, I think, when you, you know, have write back some for homework and, um, and, um, why go, you know, what, you know, went to church at the former pastor, said, one girl was, said that she could, uh, do a report on any religion but Christianity, but Christianity, but don't you, uh, do you allow faith to, um, do you allow to, um, uh, people do reports on faith, or they're allowed, if all the other stuff, they're allowed to do a report on all the other stuff, why not Christianity also?
I'm gonna have to defer to Dr. Tally because I honestly know that when I was teaching, we did, especially we taught the Holocaust, we discussed Christianity and Judaism and all those things, so I'm.
We discuss, thank you, we discuss all religions, sir.
All faith.
And, yes, sir, and Zoroastrian, uh, Confucianism, Hinduism.
No discrimination?
No, no, sir.
World religions?
World religions, Christianity.
We want our students to be well-rounded, now we cannot, uh, push or, uh, make kids join any type of religion, but we study them all. We want our students to be well-rounded, to know something about all religions, so yes, now we write papers on that, I helped to write papers with my grandson on that, so we write papers on it.
And unless we say prayer, be, uh, you know, before, uh, you know, like, you know, like start, uh, meet them in prayer?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this nation does, this world does need prayer, so, uh, is praying loud and slow now?
We don't stop people from praying.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for coming.
Yes.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, communications, uh, Young has put three here for us to read, now we'll pass it down and let you read those. Any others? That's it? Okay, while you're reading, we're gonna move on to closed session. Since you're reading, do you want me to read this part? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of evaluation, employment assignment, reassignment of employees in Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two point two dash three seven eleven A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Part B, discussion and consideration of pupil personnel matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven eleven A two four of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.